Coaching supplements, the funds we send out to our school, our health supplies. Every one of these will hurt us. So, but I don't know any way, there's nothing hid back that I don't know any way to do it without making these cuts.
Well, and if they do a tax increase to fund all of these other departments, they're not going to do another one next year. I mean, that's going to stop.
You're not going to get one for four years.
Yes, so what happens is if you get left out, which will be the first time, I think, in our county's history that they've done a tax increase and said schools get zero, then you actually go another cycle to a tax increase.
And what we did is if this 650,000 that we cut out, that, the reason we cut that out is because we did lose students this year. And we wanted to make sure that we have a budget that's in line. We've taken a balanced budget. This is my, I've been director for three years, but I did the budget before I came in that last year. Larry allowed me to do the budget. So this is my fourth year. For three years, we've been able to give, we've took every penny of new money that we've got from the state and we've put it into raises. This year, we took every new, all the money that we got, new money, which was right at 500,000, we put that into a raise. A raise is, if you look at a 1%, a 2% raise is a million dollars. Plus, our step raises are about 400,000. So we took all of that money and put it into a raise.
Well, I think, I mean, you've got to cut somewhere. And it looks to me like you kind of do across the board and everybody's going, everybody's going to be mad equally, I guess, rather than just one particular department. And we have to remember, these are proposals. These are things that we're telling commissioners, if you don't give us the money, this is what's going to happen. So, and of course, they'll see these and make it with their constituents and that.
Have they seen them? I have, I've had, some of our commissioners have asked for those and we've met with them and we've given them a copy. I have told them that it's only a draft, it's not been voted on by you all and it could change, but...
Dr. Parrott, this nursing position on here, how many nurses do we have, do we have total?
Well, this is, Mr. DeWitt, how many nurses do we have right now? Fourteen? See, see, that's another thing that people don't understand is, in the BEP, we get funding for one nurse for every 3,000 students. So, we get funded for just a little over two nurses. We have 14. But even out of the two nurses we get funded, the state only pays 77% of their salary. So, so that's where it's hard to do those things.
I really hate to see a nurse pulled out. And if you're short of those anyway, really...
One thing we need to do...
Worshiping maintenance positions.
Yes, yes, yes.
Losing a maintenance position kills you.
Yes. Losing, losing a high school, this high school position is a foreign language position that you all allowed me to put in two years ago.
Which high school will it come from?
It comes half and half. It's half at Clinton, half at Anderson County. It was the extra one we put in. This middle school position is an interventionist at Clinton Middle and Norris.
But this, this foreign language, that's a requirement, isn't it?
Yes, it is. So we move up, we move back from 28 in a classroom, back up to 35 in a classroom.
I've got a sneaking idea that we're, everybody's going to leave here unhappy with all the cuts. But I think, one thing that's important for the board to know, we need to leave here united. We need to leave here, everybody agreeing to live with what we, what we decide.
And, and, my county commissioners here, I mean, I've got, Josh Anderson has been very involved, asking me questions. He's taken the time to get involved and come here, and that's what I wish a lot of these guys would do. I mean, we've got some county commissioners that I think aren't even listening to where when you start looking at, now, we're going to cut $100,000 of band equipment. That affects 200 kids approximately. Coding these, looking at the coaching supplements that are going to get cut, that means probably at the two high schools, 50 to 60 kids won't get to participate in athletics next year. These are things that have real effects on these children. Cutting teachers in these language positions, cutting interventionists, all this stuff means something and it has a direct effect. And I'll tell you what saddened me is that I think we're getting better response, really, from some of the commissioners outside of, in Oak Ridge and Clinton than up in mind. I've got a commissioner in my district that has voted no on the budget committee.
Well, I have too.
And we have 40% of the students and the majority of the schools in our district, and he's just voted no.
We're doing an excellent job in our school system. Look at what we're doing. Look at the good things we're doing.
We gave away, on Tuesday night, upwards of almost 15 million dollars' worth of scholarships. And I know county commission has a hard job too. And, and I want to make sure that, that, I don't know how else to say, is, is this plan not only takes care of what we need today, it takes care of us down the road. I, I could see us in five years, like I said, on this plan, in five years, we've cut the deficit down by 10 million dollars. And right now, next year, Anderson County as a whole, we will pay 1.5 million dollars in interest. 1.5 million dollars. Schools is about 800,000 and the county is about 600 and a little over 600,000. And, and the problem is, if you look back, there is probably some of the things that we've done in this county, that we've pushed this debt down the road, that, things that we bought 30 years ago, we still not paid for. I would hate to say there's probably some destination stations that were computers that we're, we're still paying for. And that's what I don't want to do. I don't want to push that debt down the road. I want to pay as we go.
What is the transportation safety?
Uh, that is, that is funds that we have to put cameras in our schools. And the reason it says transportation safety is Joe used to be over transportation and safety, so that's the code it's in.
Oh, okay.
What, uh, I'm, I agree with Dale, Dr. Burrow. I don't like any of these cuts. Matter of fact, I didn't like the ones you made before we handed it out to us.
Exactly.
But tonight, we're, we are, we're told to send a balanced budget over. That's our, that's our only mandate from the budget committee right now. And so, at the appropriate time, I would, you know, I would make the motion that we go with this budget that you, that you have, assuming that there'll, there'll be a chance for us to tweak some of these things, because some of them are really distasteful.
Yep, well, I understand that.
And we may see something else that, that we feel like, or I feel like would be a better choice. So, but, again, I, I, I hope, I hope they see the light over there. But this is...
We don't want to go backwards.
It's a one-time deal for them, but it's a, it's, as Tim said, it's a 10-year thing for us.
Yes.
Dr. Parrott, thank you for not neglecting the pay raise, for watching after these teachers. That used to be where there was cut to be made. That's where it would come.
I could, you could give a 1% pay raise and I could cut it in half, because it's about a half million dollars. And you would be within 300,000 of a balanced budget, but it's not, I, I mean, when, when, when Oak Ridge gives two and a half, when Knox County gives three and a half, when Clinton City gives more, when, when Mariville gives five, I mean, we've, we've had three, we've lost three teachers this week to Knox County.
Can you lose your good teachers?
Yes, yes.
That's another example where we're looking ahead. And we're, you know, if we don't give a pay raise this year, then we're that much further behind when other counties do. And that just widens that gap. And, and just like the budget maintenance items and capital outlays and, and our salaries, we're looking ahead. We've got a plan. And it's not like we go to county commission every year begging for money. We, we're not balancing our budget on our rollover any longer.
No.
We're living within our means, which is more than some entities in this county can say. And we're not begging for money and we're not needing money. We've been very, very good stewards of the money that's been given to us. So, and, and the money we're asking for is not, for it's a one-time thing, it's looking down the road, both for, for salaries as well as capital outlays.
And eliminating debt service.
Right, yeah.
To retain good teachers, I don't know, over the last few years, we've lost a lot of teachers. But to retain good teachers and good staff, you have to pay them. But they're going to go to, they're going to go somewhere where they can make better money.
Yep. One of the things that, that is in, that was in your packet was this, was this piece of paper right here, you, is, is that, is, if you see our, our certified staff, and the reason this says Anderson, Knox, Anderson, Rome, Morgan, there, there's a places in our, that, that we really can't tell if they live in Norgan County or they live in Rome County and those things like that. But if you look, there's, out of 600 teachers, there's over 350 of them live in Anderson County. The biggest one, there's 184 live in Knox County. But if you get over to our classified staff, which I think is the backbone of our school system, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, our, our food service workers, our people that are in assistance, almost, almost 90% of them live in Anderson County.
And they pay taxes back. That's if they live here, they pay county taxes, and if they live in the city, of course, they pay city taxes.
And, and I've, and I've had a, I've had a commissioner that, that we've talked, we've met with, we've met with them this week. And, and I think the, we're going to take anything that county commission gives us, because they're, they're our only funding body.
May I say something?
Yes.
I think we need to be careful about breaking down our relationship with county commission and don't go around saying county commission did this, county commission did that, and then it just casts the black eye on us and county commission. And I had a county commissioner today ask me about the out of county students. And I said, well, we can't afford to do without the county, out of county students.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if, I said, if we lost them, we would be in a world of hurt. Sometimes they, you just take your time and calmly explain things to them, so they don't misunderstand what we're doing. But let's don't, let's don't give them all the black eye.
Well, and, and I think that, that county commission has been looking, one of the things they've been doing in the chamber for the last five or six years when they've been over there, is, is they understand that there is a need for affordable housing in Anderson County. And, and what is happening is, all of these companies that are, if you're up there at the industrial park, because the high school gets out at the same time, most of all them cars get on the road and go to Campbell County, to Union County, to Scott County, and so, because they can afford to live up there. And, and that, that hurts us too, but...
And with your list here of those teachers that live in Knox County?
Yep.
They're, we, we're, unfortunately, we're having to hire new teachers on a yearly basis and, and they can't afford to live in Anderson County. And so, they live in Knox County or Campbell, simply because there's not affordable housing for them. A teacher making 30,000 dollars a year, and that's what we're doing.
They may already own a house in Knox County.
Yeah, some of them do.
I want to, probably some of the jobs that Joe said, I don't think anybody at the meetings I've been here has said a disparaging thing about the county commission. Because, well, they're, they are elected to do their job, and just like we were elected to do our job. We don't have a funding source other than that we have to go and present a budget to them, and they can give their thumbs up or thumbs down. It is fair, in my mind, for them to say, we're not going to do a tax increase this year for everybody. I think that is a fair statement for a commission to do. But when you go under these new financial management acts where you lose even more control, I don't think it is unreasonable to broadcast out, by leaving us out, by approving everybody else's approval, which will have an eight-year effect on us. It has a real, direct impact upon students and families that live in their district. I think that's why Josh is here. Josh has asked me questions, how does this affect our district? How does this, what are the real numbers? And I don't think it's disparaging to say, what you're doing directly affects the quality of education and the services, and these are real people's lives that are going to be affected by this decision. If they think that is a disparaging comment, then I respectfully disagree with them. I mean, you know, I wish more of them had been here tonight where they could ask these questions. I would love for the county commission to come to one of our budget meetings and say, hey, let's talk about it, you know? Have the dialogue that Josh had with me. Explain to me, tell me where we are.
I don't, I don't think the county commission, I think they've got a plan to give their employees what, a 2% raise.
Yeah, that's what, well, and, and I will say this, these, these budget cuts that we did before, they have real people's names to them.
Yeah, they will not have a job next year.
These, these middle school positions that were cut, they, they both had a name to them. And I mean, these, these other ones that we're going to cut, they have names to them. There, there are not any open positions.
Let me take control of the meeting again. I would point out Commissioner White is also in the, in our audience. We appreciate you being here. Any other commissioners that we, so, if you think this is a decent jumping off point, I'll entertain a motion to accept this and then we can actually have a discussion. So, we're kind of having a discussion without a, a motion on the floor. So I would appreciate a motion on the floor for us to discuss.
The, the budget committee of county commissioners asked Dr. Parrott and the board to send over a balanced budget. Dr. Parrott has necessary cuts from the budget that he proceeded to us to make it a balanced budget and to sustain the raises. And I move that we accept that page one and incorporate that into a budget to give to our budget committee.
Second to motion.
So that, just page one is what you're...
Yeah.
Well...
That's all the budget committees asked.
That's all it is. Well, you're right. Okay, I appreciate it. Okay, now, that's the motion on the floor.
I have a question.
I would appreciate the discussion staying on that motion.
Yeah, I have a question. As it relates to the proposed cuts, if we eliminated all of the funding that we provide for the SRO officers and follow the promise that was made by the sheriff's department to step up and provide that, what would it look like? If we just totally eliminated everything for SROs and say, we want the sheriff's department to provide all of the SROs out of their budget, what would that be?
I want to say around 250,000 total.
Let me double check that.
Yeah, that was a campaign promise we don't want to have to vote, actually. Because he don't have anything to give.
Well, I mean, if they're getting eight, so 250,000?
A little over 250, count the car.
And we're eliminating the car in this. So I mean, that's something that I would like to consider, because everybody, the whole focus of what I have been hearing is, and reading online, you read the Facebook, is, hey, we want to emphasize law and order, and I think that's great, but I think they should, these are their employees, they should be paying them and with their increase, I would rather them put them back into our schools. Because I can't imagine that they would say, oh, if we're not, if we can't afford to pay for sheriff's deputies to be in our schools, that they wouldn't provide them. I mean, we're providing a police force, we're subsidizing the sheriff's department with part of our money that we're using for educational services, and I think that that should be the responsibility of the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, but I really hate to start cutting one, one thing and another thing out of this thing. If, if we send it over there as it is, hopefully, we're going to get something from county commission. And then we'll have to come back, we'll have to come back with whatever they give us and, and then add those things or take those things out. I'm confident that we'll get something. I can't believe that, that we're, that the county commission is going to fund the sheriff's department at eight cents and not give the Board of Education anything. But I think we're going to come back to that point to make those cuts, you know, later on down the road. See what I'm saying?
Well, no, I do, but I think when, I mean, our job is to educate the children and to provide the best education that we can. And every year, we're trying to do more with the sheriff's department, the SRO. When the program started, remember, we didn't pay anything for it. It was done through a grant and it kind of got expanded. And now, we subsidize a large portion of these sheriff's deputy salaries, even this car. I mean, this car isn't used exclusively for Anderson County schools. It's, you know, on the road, it's in the summer, going to be there. You know, part of our budget is now being asked to subsidize other county departments. And if we're going to make cuts, you know, that's something that I think we should talk about. But I am in agreement, Johnny, with, I think we need to go as one unified voice with what we send over. And I'm going to, I'm going to support this proposal. I mean, I'm going to support it as it stands. But I do think when it comes back, we need to look at extra things that, you know, they're, they are taking advantage and getting benefit from us, using, even like Channel 95. We present money and stuff that goes out of our budget to help offset Channel 95. Well, nobody in my district gets Channel 95. We don't, you know, that's great for the Oakridgers, it's great for the Clinton folks, but the 40% of our students that live in my district, we don't get Channel 95. It's just not available with our services. So, we're providing something that we're paying for, that the county benefits from, but our students aren't.
Would it be beneficial for us to come back after Monday night's meeting and look at this again?
I don't, I don't think that, I...
I think we're going to have to come back with whatever county commission gives. Like I say, I've got all the faith in the world that county commission is going to help us some. How much?
I don't think they'll do any of that money.
Uh, I don't know. But when, whatever they give us, then we'll have to come back and cut those things out of this, out of this budget.
Yeah, no budget's ever set in stone, just the bottom line. So, once we know how much money we have, we can arrange the top part however we need to. But, but this is an idea of some examples of how we're going to have to make those adjustments.
We're doing what county commission asked us to do.
Right, and good faith.
And in, and in doing so, we, we need to, in response here, this chairman of the budget committee, this is, this is what we're proposing, but depending on what happens in the budget committee and county commission, we, you know, we, we have the, we have the authority to change things and to make that request and then, as I said a long ago, there's some things that I don't, I don't like about our budget. And so I, I will address them sometime, not, not now. We're, we're in too serious business right now. But we, we need, we need to get this and then know that we're going to come back. And they'll, if they only give us two cents, I, I may go on with that. And about anything, because we've said we're going to keep raises. We've got to figure out a way to put some of these roofs on, you know? Have a problem eating lunch in Andersonville because roofs leaking, we're going to have to replace it. We've got several things like that we need, we have to do. And so, that would be a very disparate step, taking those SROs, I would like that, but...
Well, there's not anything on this list that I want to get rid of. But I think ultimately, we're going to have to get rid of part of it.
This, and I think Tim did a good job of spreading it out over all of the departments. He took it from band, athletic, construction, maintenance, I mean, nobody was left untouched. And I thought that, Tim, you should be commended, you and Jimmy, on that, because it did give a broad, you know, you didn't just go to one department and say, we're done. Everything was affected.
As you said, the other night, one of you said, I wouldn't sleep much. Well, I've not, because this is, this is not a, it's not a good budget, but, but I can't, but you can't ignore capital outlay. I, I mean, you can't ignore the teachers and you can't ignore capital outlay. You can't do, because if you do one, you know, the teacher can't teach you if they've got a bucket in their classroom. The other thing that, you know, we've done, you've all let us do a great job, the funding for school supplies, we've done a great job. We've been sending $10,000 out to our schools and they've took care, I mean, if you look the, the, the list of requests that they give to us now that they need, it, it's just about, there's probably six or seven of our schools don't even send us anything. And this cuts this by about 2,500 dollars. And, you know, for our small schools, it's hard for them to raise funds. It's hard for them to send kids on field trips and stuff. And that money allows them to do those extra things.
With gas prices going up, like you said, and they're always going, how do we cut the 15,000?
We just, when we run out of gasoline, we don't go no further.
You've got to have buses.
These cuts may not really hurt until the end of the year.
Yeah, until the bus.
Yeah.
Well, well, this doesn't take, you have to, this is not bussy. You have to consider that, that in our budgets, 80,000 dollars more for bus money, for, for fuel. But this is taken, this is taken out from, from, pretty much, that's maintenance. That's maintenance gasoline.
And it wasn't that long ago when gas spiked and school systems were having to ground their buses.
Yes.
Remember Sevier County, Hawkins County, several of them said, we just don't have the money to run them right now. You talk about your phone ringing at that point.
Well, of course, we don't have any control over that gas escalation.
It's in the contract and...
We did, once we, once we signed the contract. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, ready to vote? All in favor? This, it's actually page two, I guess.
This is a committee vote, right?
This is a committee vote, just forward to the full board, this, these recommended cuts, which will present a balanced budget to county commission, which is what we asked. Were those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That is done. So, that's the only item before our budget committee, so we will be adjourned.
Okay, we have a special call meeting to consider the budget, which I will now call to order. I guess we need to do the pledge.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Since we only have one item on the, call, special call meeting, do we have a report from the budget committee?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We meant just moments ago. The motion that has been forwarded to the full board is essentially page two of the packet, which balances the budget by cutting 807,500 dollars in addition to 650,000 that has already been cut out of the budget. So that has been approved by the budget committee and sent to the board, and I so move.
Second.
Move to second, approve the cuts presented by Dr. Parrott to present to the, the full county commission.
Does that have to be a roll call vote?
Discussion.
Does that have to be a roll call vote? Does that have to be a roll call vote? I have no idea.
No, I don't think so. It's not an appropriation.
Okay, it's not appropriate, okay.
Dr. Burrow, do you think it's appropriate to read off what is going to be cut since we're televised and we is here so that everybody knows what they will affect?
I think, I think that's fine. Budget cuts of no new funds are from county commission with a 2% raise for all employees. I think that's the one thing that the board is united on, is that we've got to give our, our teachers a raise and the classified a raise. The cuts that are proposed, Jim at Grand Oaks, 200,000 dollars. Band equipment at a high school, 50,000 dollars. One middle school position, 50,000 dollars. One high school position, 50,000 dollars. One maintenance position, 30,000 dollars. One full-time nurse, 30,000 dollars. One technology position, 50,000 dollars. Special ed, education assistance, 50,000 dollars. Custodial personnel, 50,000 dollars. High school coaching supplements, 30,000 dollars. Funds for school supplies, 42,500... Funds for school supplies, forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. SRO vehicle, twenty-five thousand dollars. Transportation safety, thirty-five thousand dollars. That's the cameras?
Yeah, that's the cameras.
Okay. Health service supplies and materials, twenty-five thousand dollars. Gasoline, fifteen thousand dollars. Special ed and structural supplies, ten thousand dollars. City of Rocket, Rocket Top field maintenance, ten thousand dollars. Health services travel, fifty thousand, uh, five, five thousand dollars. Regular instruction staff development, seven thousand dollars. CTE student travel, five thousand dollars. Technology and structural supplies, five thousand dollars. Board of Education travel, five thousand dollars. Cut twenty days from two one-hundred-and-twenty-day contracts, five thousand dollars. Director of School Travel, three thousand dollars. Director of School Supplies and Materials, five thousand dollars. Director of Schools, Other Charges, Employees Celebration, five thousand dollars. Office of the Principal Travel, five thousand dollars. Office of the Principal Staff Development, five thousand dollars. For a total of eight hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars.
So, collectively, we will now have cut from last year's budget approximately one point five million dollars.
That's, that's your raise.
Other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. Motion?
Dr. Joe had a question.
I'm sorry.
I will vote yes for this motion. But I must explain that I do have family employed in the system. But that does not affect my vote.
Other discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, no. Motion carries. Is there other budgetary items to come before the board?
When would be the next time that we would need to get together? I suppose depends on what happens across the street.
I was up there.
I don't know when the next budget committee is.
Jerry probably knows.
Jerry's here.
Jerry, do you know when the next budget committee is?
It's the first Thursday of, what's next month?
June? June?
Wait a minute, won't this go before county commission, Monday night? So, if county commission should come up and pleasantly give us something to work with, we, we need to come back before, before the county budget committee that meets again, don't we?
I think that was the plan, to come back before the, at our next budget meeting.
Before.
Oh, at it.
At the next budget meeting, we are expecting your proposed budget.
Not at county commission? So, we're gonna put it on, okay.
Do you have, did, did the budget committee for this meeting whenever you, next Monday, is budgeting?
We forwarded...
Do you have a proposal?
We forwarded our agenda to the full commission with a, uh, asking for approval. But, and we think right then, there'll be some discussion on the school budget. And I think, I think it'd be possible.
Jerry, do, do you think there'll be a decision made that we would know that we were gonna get something on Monday night?
Dr. Burrow, I'll be very surprised if it's not brought up and discussed and some type of a motion concerning your budget.
On Monday night?
I'll be very surprised if that's...
This month, this month.
If it, if it was, then, then I would suggest we meet next Thursday, again, to go over whatever changes that commission recommends. Is there any problem with that?
No, I'll be out of town, I'll be out of town next Thursday.
I could go if we could move into Act Seven.
Okay. Or do we need to put it off another week?
Might all be another week, though.
Well, this depends on when commission approves the final budget. They can put it off till December if they want to, they just have to...
You know, if they vote, vote Monday, I don't know when it is.
But...
If it increases, then we can coast. We, we have some time.
I mean, our budget is good through June thirtieth.
And so, I mean, in June, we could finalize. If they, if they don't give us any money, or some, if they give us some, any money, we've already got a budget approved. Uh, if we, if they give us some money, then we're gonna have to do the dates and, and approve.
Should we just wait then to our normal June budget meeting?
That's the tenth.
Is it, if, if we, Jerry, is, you say the budget committee meeting is the first Thursday?
Well, our, our budget committee, next budget committee meeting would be the tenth.
But if the commission votes to do something Monday night, will it still go to you, uh, the budget committee in first Thursday? You don't know?
If they make a proposal and give us eight cents...
I'm gonna have to come back early from my vacation.
But we have fulfilled what the budget committee has requested with that budget. If, if they, we do get additional funds, certainly we're gonna change that budget. And I would thank you all to understand that.
Well, when, when do we meet to make that recommendation?
If, if, if I could, to, to put all these cuts in this budget, that, that's about a week's work for Jim. Cause he's gotta go by and, and do everything on all of those codes. Because I pulled three or four codes together, we've gotta do it. And, and I would like for us to, to maybe, we know the cuts are in there. If, if, if they vote us down, then we've gotta put it in there. But, but it's a whole lot easier to, to not do it and take it out. Does that make sense? I mean, that, that, we'd have to, by the fourth, we'll have to send a balanced budget over. If they do nothing Monday night, then we will send them a balanced budget over there on the fours.
And I, I don't think commission and budget committee is looking for an itemized budget.
No.
They're, they're looking for bottom line, right? And, and with this number, Jim can give them that. And, uh, and what those cuts were, it doesn't have to say what code they're coming out of. They, they could care less, I would think, uh, what code it comes out of. But it, uh, they would have the bottom line. And then, um, if we do get something, you could come back with a different plan.
Right. Scott, will you be in town on the four, on June the fourth, that day? The budget committee meeting?
Yeah, Tuesday.
No, on the sixth, June the sixth.
Oh, no, I'm out of town.
We'll know something Monday night.
But we, we've, we've approved two budgets. One's eight hundred thousand out of whack and one is balanced. So, we hit anywhere in between those, we're good.
We're gonna, we're, Jim's gonna have some work to do, and then we need to come back and approve it.
Right.
Uh, the question is when? Jim, if you get additional funds, how long would it take? A week?
This budget?
It depends on when it comes.
For Monday night?
If, if they go on the, on the, uh, on the twentieth, then that would be doable by the budget committee meeting on the sixth. Their budget committee meeting meets on the sixth of June.
On that Thursday?
Yes.
But if county commission approves our budget...
If they give us capital outlay money, they approve capital outlay money.
We will address response committee.
There would still need to be adjustments.
Yeah, well, we would still have to adjust our budget.
We would still have to adjust our budget over there, because it contains the eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, uh, more than the revenues that we projected. And so, we, what we would have to do is go in and pull out that eight twenty-one and move it over to the one seventy-seven by, which is probably where they would fund those capital approvals.
Yeah.
Or a piece of that.
Yes.
Recommendation, Dr. Barrett, when are we gonna meet?
Well, if, if, after Monday, let, let's wait till after Monday and, and is there...
I can do a special call meeting if we need to.
Can we do it, can we do it that week of the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth?
I can do it every day but Friday. And I don't, I doubt we would do it Memorial Day, but I could do it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
The twenty-seventh, maybe?
I'd do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
No, May twenty, May twenty-third, May twenty-fourth, though. Do what? I know, and I'm out of town the first week in June, but I may just have to cut it. When, when are, when are you leaving, Jim?
I'm leaving on the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth.
Be gone all week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then...
And you deserve it, don't you feel at least a guilty?
That puts us into the first week of June.
And I'll be on the first week of June.
Puts it in the second week of June. We need...
That would be our normal, if we did it.
Our normal meeting is on the tenth. Is, is that early enough to do it?
Well, th- this would be my thing. If nothing changes, you've, you've told us to bring a balanced budget to him. And, and so, if, if the board, if the board would do that, if, if they give us, like, like Jim says, if they give us five, if they give us six cents, then, then six cents, and we feel that we, we can take, with six cents, we can take four hundred thousand out and out of our capital outlay money, and we can cut that out of the budget, then we can work with the rest of it. We would just, we would be out of balance to start with. You, we'd, we'd have to, on the tenth, we would have to, we would have to balance that budget. Does that make sense?
Like going through these items and picking and choosing which ones to put back in?
Yeah.
Or which other ones to take out, if there's something else you wanted to take out?
Because right now, unless county commission does something on Monday night, we've gotta take, we've gotta take, the budget committee, we're, we're bound by that eighty-one act, that we've gotta bring him a, a balanced budget, that's what they've asked us for.
We've done that now.
Yes, yes.
If, if they don't give us anything, then we're, we're where we're at.
Yes, yes.
But if they do, if they give us, and I, I think we'll, I hope we'll get something. Then we've gotta come back and adjust these, these cuts that we've made.
Well, and we can do that at a regular, we can do that on a regular meeting on the tenth.
On the tenth, okay. We'll, we'll schedule that meeting for the tenth, then. Anything else to come before the budget committee or the board?
Tim, you and Jimmy did a good job on it.
And I will, I will, if, if, if we need to come, I'll, I'll just...
We can always call it.
My wife can watch that, cause I'll have to cut my vacation short.
You, you really don't need to do that, Tim. You need that.
You deserve a vacation.
Yes, you do.
I would encourage everybody to go to the board meeting, commission meeting on Monday night and talk to their commissioner.
Is, is it okay if I send, I've sent some, the commissioners that I will send this out, uh, the budget, the first, I'll send all three sheets out to them and where our kids go, where our, where our people go.
I, I think they ought to know where, where we're going, what, what we've got to...
I will, I will send it out.
Commission meets at six...
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
They have resolutions at six, and then they will meet regular session at six thirty.
And the public is invited as well.
Yeah, we had a pretty good audience over there at the last budget meeting from the school board.
Yes, yes.
Anything else to come before the board?
Thanks to Jerry and Josh for coming.
Yep. Graduation's Sunday.
Yes.
One thirty, yep. And there's, they're bringing food.
Hey, if, if they act on Monday night, I can, I can have that, I think I can have those things that you've got on that list.
We are ASAP of Anderson. We are celebrating ten years of prevention. Powered by more than eleven thousand hours given by volunteers like you. Together, we've reduced underage substance misuse in our county by fifty-three and a half percent. Our brand has changed, but our mission remains the same. Prevention works.